Alderman Tolemy.
Here.
I declare court in present. I make a motion to approve Minnesota's dated December 14th, 2006. Is there a second? On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is report and recommendation on financial software vendor selection. And after going through several different softwares, I believe we have it narrowed down to two potential vendors for the financial software. And while there are pros and cons of each, there's also going to be an onsite visit for each to see the software in action. And then, the way I understand it, then we'll review both to make a final decision. And with that, I'm going to hand it over to our interim finance director, Ms. Powers, to add anything to that.
Thank you Chairman Winger. We were very pleased with the demos of both the INCODE and the Springbrook software. Staff attended from every department, so lots of questions were asked, lots of information was exchanged. But we do need to go onsite and see a live installation. What I'm contemplating is having the assistant finance director and the utility billing clerk going out when a community is actually doing water billing, to go through that whole cycle. Also having the accounts payable clerk go and work with one of the users on getting a list of bills together, to see how that goes. And then finally, the assistant finance director can go through all the general accounting procedures and inquiry procedures that both these types of software have. That's probably going to take 45 to 60 days for us to do that. And since the pricing so far on these types of software is so far in a way higher than what we thought on the original budget, we're going to have to budget it for the next budget. It's not going to come in in '06, '07, it'll be in '07, '08. So this will give us the opportunity to test it out, really see what type of scenarios take place when you have the software live. And then, both of these vendors have offered to come back and answer any questions. They would be happy to make presentations to the council if that's what's required. But we want to take this step by step very carefully, so that we end up with the right product.
Thank you. Alderman Suback?
How much were we off the original budget amount?
I don't even remember Alderman Suback. I think we had something like $90,000 in the budget, but the range now is like $150 to $180.
Because it's going up so much, do we need to do another reevaluation to make sure we actually need it?
In my personal opinion, no. But if that's what the council would prefer, I guess we can try that. The software, the MSI software that's being used right now was installed in 1999. It's a DOS-based product. It doesn't contain any of the query features. And by that, I mean, none of us has the ability to easily look up anything, whether it be a paid bill, whether it be a vendor that we've dealt with, account activity from a couple of years ago, somebody's status on a water billing account, very cumbersome to use. We don't get the good reports that we'd like to share with the council and share with other staff. We did a survey of about 25 communities in the area, and most people have changed their software within the last five years. So...
Yeah, I'm still convinced we need it, but I guess my question would be, it depends on the budget. But if we originally thought this was going to be $90,000, and now it's going to $180, maybe unfortunately, and we've been like this since '99, maybe it might be an '08 budget issue, or the year passed, and actually put $90,000 away this year that we didn't spend, put $50,000 away next year, and $50,000 the following year, and then have the money actually paid for it.
Yeah, it would all have to be paid for in the same 12-month period, most likely. Because even though you phase it in, a lot of the stuff that's done upfront, the vendors tend to charge for. So in other words, we would not be able to do utility billing if we didn't also do cash receipting, because otherwise, we wouldn't have a cash register that interfaced.
Right.
So you know, you can't do it that way. Payroll, you could do standalone for a while, but certainly staff can look at that. And I think we got five responses from the request for proposals that we sent out, and we sent to nine or 10 vendors. So these two were in the middle in terms of pricing. There was another out there that was well over $200,000, more like $250.
So perhaps, though, instead of reevaluating whether we're going to do the software, perhaps we look at the modules? Because the way I understand it with most software, they can be as simple or robust as we'd like them to be. So maybe we start out with a subset of modules, and then build on. Is that a possibility?
There's somewhat of a possibility for that, but that does tend to double the training budget. Because usually what you do is phase in the software, all of the modules you're going to be using, and because they're interrelated, you end up having staff trained simultaneously on several things. For instance, let's say we train our utility billing clerk to actually process billing, but there'd be people in city services, not only the people who take the readings, but the people who look at the exception reports, and they would also be trained at the same time. So we'd be talking about, part of it would be cash receipting, then part of it would be utility billing, but they are interrelated. And the only thing that you might call new about what we looked at was a separate module called service orders or work orders. And this would allow the city to track any customer request for any reason. So if someone called up about a water break, that would be tracked, and it would be assigned to the appropriate department. If someone called up and they just wanted to complain about something they'd read in the paper or saw on television, that would be written up. The city doesn't need that. That would be nice to have, but we didn't put that in our original request for proposal, so it wasn't in the original pricing. The prices I'm giving you, the ranges right now, don't include that. And I guess what I need to do is go back and see what the, as Alderman Winger said, take the very basic modules that we would need, and the ones that we couldn't live without because they're interfacing, and then come back to you with that. But see, then the pricing will be all different. Because the vendors put it in a package of, you know, it's like pricing a car. They're going to put so many features in it because so many users say that this is what they want. And if you begin to buy it piecemeal, they just up the price.
Thank you Alderman Tolemy.
Yeah, I'd just like to reiterate, kind of like what Maggie's saying. First off Maggie, I think you've done a good job, okay? I mean, a great job as far as pulling it all together. I think one thing that might help is if you could give everybody in the council a breakdown of what all the different modules are, and what they're expected to do. I mean, you might have, but I mean, when we talk about it, you know, like if we haven't seen it in a week, we don't know necessarily what we're talking about. My point is that if we have that in front of us, I mean, I know you need a new system, okay? And I mean, I think you should continue on the track you're going, and look at the costs. And I do concur with what you're saying. If you start breaking up the different modules, and try purchasing them separate, you're going to end up paying a lot more because, for it in the long run. It's better, if we're going to do it, let's do it right, and let's get it in. What I recommend is that you do continue forward, and you do go and check out in other municipalities, and see both of these softwares. And are they really going to fit the need of the city? Not just for the short term, okay? But are they also going to serve for the long term? You know, are they going to be viable for the next five years? I mean, in '99, I'll be honest with you, I don't know why we bought a DOS-based system. Because no way should we have ever bought a DOS-based system in '99, okay? DOS was already on its way out. But we have to make sure that this is something that's going to be around for a while, and that we are going to be able to get the maximum benefit out of, in all departments. Because if I recollect, it's not just the finance department that's going to be using this, there are other areas. Gary's area is going to be using it, Roger's area is going to be using it. So you've got the building department, you've got city services. I mean, so it's a multifaceted system, and it should be integrated all as one package. And when you start trying to piecemeal things together, it just doesn't work. So I would prefer, I mean, that's my take, and I'm talking, I've had experience with IT for a while, so you know, you guys can take it for what it's worth, you folks can take it for what it's worth. But that would be my recommendation, is go for it, and see what, you know, put your plan together, come back at the budget, you know, and present it to us. But in the meantime, don't stop doing what you're doing. You know, if you get a chance to go out and see somebody's system in play, do it, and see, is it going to give you what you think we need? Because if it's not, then we need to look elsewhere. I mean, bottom line.
Thank you. I'm going to call Alderman Wesley then. Alderman Suback, Alderman Wesley.
Maggie, on the system, they probably had to, how many years will this system last about? And with the system, will we be able to add other stuff onto the system down the line? Or is it just what we are going to ask for, or will we be able to add?
Well, I'd have to pose those individual questions to the vendors, but I think everybody hopes to get five to 10 years out of software that they purchase. If you'll notice in my memorandum, I indicated that I thought the Springbrook software might offer more horsepower than the city really needs. And by saying that, and I'm not against Springbrook at all, but I want to go out and see how it really operates in the field. It is so user-oriented, that it appears that they believe that they have the Cadillac of software for governments, and that they can handle any situation that might arise. And what we looked at when we did the demos were the basic things like the cash sharing, accounts receivable, accounts payable, payroll, and utility billing. But then, we started talking about interfacing with GIS, and being able to, for instance, dial up any customer by their name, by their address, by their utility bill account, by a building permit number, and being able to see all of the transactions that that individual person has with the city. Which is a big time saver. Because right now, if you wanted to know if someone was late on their water bills, you'd have to go into the utility billing. At that point, you would have no idea if they have two outstanding permits in the building department. You wouldn't know if there was a service call that was still pending from city services. You wouldn't know any of that. This software could do all of that. Any person who had access would be able to basically see the entire picture of a customer. Which does make us then more responsive to people, because we do have the full picture. Having said that, the way they approach this is through screens, or masks, which they set up that are tailored to each user. So Gary, Holm, and I talked about this a little bit. Let's say that someone in city services needed to look up information about tree removal at a particular property. The screen that they would have permission to access, wouldn't tell them all about the water bills, or how, you know, they wouldn't gain access to information that they shouldn't have and didn't need. But they would have the information that they must have to service that customer. And so, we would spend a lot of time with the software vendor, deciding exactly how these screens or masks would be set up. And from what they said, and maybe Gary can add his comments about this, it seemed as if they were constantly adding more, more features to their software to make it even better for their users. Plus, they have a very active users group. But both software vendors have the same thing. And by that, I mean, not only do they have good customer service, and they make a pledge on how many hours it'll take for them to get back to you with a complaint, but on top of that, they encourage their users to share on the internet problems that they're encountering, or easier ways to do things, so that they bring that whole user group along with them. And they get, the Springbrook people, I think, were talking about at least one version, new version release a year. And of course, we want to talk with them more about that, because clearly, if you have to pay for other versions, that wouldn't be appropriate. But you always pay a month, or an annual maintenance fee, so if the maintenance fee covers those upgrades, then that would be great. You know, then we'd be, in other words, we'd be staying current with the best that they have to offer. And it might just, that's why, as I said, I'm waiting for some alternate pricing, based on questions and concerns that we discovered during the demos. When they get that to me, I'll have a better idea. But meanwhile, I would like to send staff out to really practice with the software, and see if it does what they said it was going to do.
Well, I have no problem in sending staff out on that. My concern is, with the price going up so high that we talked about, is I want to make sure, like Dave said, that it's going to last a long period of time, and I want to know, four years down the line, or six years down the line, will we be able to add onto the system, to upgrade it, and let it carry on through a few more years, or not? I mean, it's a hundred and eighty-some thousand dollars ballpark figure we're talking here. In seven years, I think we should be able to get, with the upgrades in the computer system nowadays, you should be able to update it and get a few more years out of it. I'm just looking for the most years out of our box. That's all. Thank you.
Alderman Suback?
Certainly wasn't advocating stopping it. I just said that if Maggie comes back and says, it's going to cost $250,000 to really get what we need, and it's not a Cadillac, but it's whatever car we want to call it, I'm saying, because we've had this system since '99, and if our budget couldn't afford it next year, you can always just put, we put money away this year, in year one, put money away in year two, and then we buy it in year three, and make sure we're buying the right thing. Not buying in piecemeal, but buying it all the modules that we need at the same time. Because my other concern is my understanding, Microsoft is issuing a new operating system that's coming out, that they're eliminating. XP, is that the latest one, Dave? You would know better than I. And that's coming out this year. And so I don't want to be sitting here in seven years and say, why did they buy a software that's for XP when we knew that was going out? So maybe a one-year wait wouldn't be so terrible either for that situation. Thank you.
I'm going to call Alderman Tolemy then. Alderman calls, Alderman Tolemy.
Yeah, first comment I just want to make is that it's ironic, I mean, Maggie, that you're talking about the ability to have an individual or a resident in the system, and be able to know, you know, every transaction that they've had with the city. I remember sitting in this council about five, six years ago, when we first started talking about bringing IT in, and, you know, into the city. And I said, wouldn't it be great, you know, if we had the ability, that if a customer called on the phone, you know, we'd know everything, you know, the individual answering, know everything about that person, so they could really help them? Instead of, well, handing them off to 15 different people, and, you know, trying to find the right person to be able to help them. And so I really support doing this, okay? I believe too, that you can write the software off for, what, three years, is it?
Well, we don't have tax concerns here, so we, you know, I mean, we just expense it. And we'd capitalize it for Gatsby 34 purposes.
That's right, okay.
Alderman calls.
All right. Everybody knows that in the computers and in software, everything changes every year. So updates is normal. I mean, you can't figure what you're buying today is going to be good five years from now, because it can be changed. That's all I wanted to say. Everybody's talking that.
Alderman Tolemy?
Just one more thing. And it has to do with, Maggie, your original price of $90,000, at the time, if I'm not mistaken, that was a best guess estimate, right?
It was a complete guess, because I didn't have any, well, we didn't know how far we could get in this process.
So I mean, so really, now that you've had the opportunity to dig into it, and really start looking at the different modules and different things, what you found is that, well, we were way off on it, but the reality is, to buy a good system, a decent system, that's going to give the city everything that it needs, you are going to be looking at anywhere from $150,000 to $180,000 to, you know, maybe $200,000.
That's the way it appears. And keep in mind, and I will get you this listing, because you need to see what they've built in for training, and what they've built in for conversion. Conversion services are pretty expensive, because we've got a lot of data. I mean, we don't want to lose the ability to look up water bill accounts. We don't want to lose the ability to look up permits. We need to keep that data, but it all needs to be converted. And one of the things that the Springbrook representatives were telling us is that they do a business review, they come out, and they don't charge you for this. If they feel that there's going to be a fit, then hopefully, somewhere down the road, the decision is going to be made in their favor. They come and do this whole business review. They sit down with all the departments, and say, what do you do, what do you need to do, you know, the whole thing. How many transactions a month, how many a day? All that stuff. Then, they figure out what it's going to take to convert that particular customer, to do it, to make it turnkey. That's their goal. It's a professional way of approaching things. And I got the impression that Springbrook feels, because of its size, and the number of customers they have nationwide, they expect to be around for a good long time. Of course, when we get to contract negotiation, that's when you put in things to protect the city, you know, like making sure in the contract that the source code is held in escrow, a third-party escrow. So that if the company were to fold, you could still have your software serviced, let's say. That sort of thing. But we're not there yet. We really want to explore this more, because it was split down the middle, with the employees who looked at the software. They liked them both, and I guess that tells me, first of all, that while we can certainly get another year out of MSI, but it's so different, people were astounded. Employees were actually, like, real excited when they saw what was really out there, what you could do, compared to what they're forced to do now. And I should also mention that we are actively working on solving the hardware problems in city services, which have to do with, they need remote access, but they need to have much more speed. So that's being addressed from our new hardware support person. And those questions are going to be answered, and he's already spoken with both these vendors to talk about what would need to take place. So no decision is going to be proposed to the council until we've got all of our questions answered, to our satisfaction.
I just, real quick, I just reaffirm that, if you're going to install any system, okay, it is better to spend as much time as you need on the front end, before you do it, than to, believe me, than putting it in and having to go back. I've seen companies die by doing that, okay? So, whatever.
Okay, so in terms of recommendation, is it sufficient to say, continue as you outlined in your memo? And when we reconvene, if you can come back with a breakdown of what each module is going to do? And then also, is it possible to have a listing of the pros and cons of each of the two software? Just high level, like the different staff people that might have preferred one over the other, and why?
And hopefully by then, when we get to the point of doing the budget for information technology, I'll have some live data back from the staff who went out in the field. And then, and that will help us, you know, narrow the search a little more.
Okay. Okay, so, do I keep that for information only? Okay, information only. Next item is, item number five for information only, payroll outsourcing. Ms. Powers?
Thank you Chairman Winger. As you know, we looked at three vendors for payroll outsourcing, and this was to solve problems that we have all the time with MSI, plus hopefully step up a little bit in terms of letting the departments submit their timesheets electronically, as opposed to on paper. But it doesn't seem that it makes sense for us to look any further at this outsourcing, until we make our decision about the software. Because both the software vendors that we looked at during the demonstrations have wonderful payroll modules, that will allow the same sort of thing to take place. So there'd be no reason to go outside. If you recall, we were looking at payroll outsourcing, because we were struggling with the amount of time it was taking to get an accurate payroll done. And most of the companies, like ADP, Paychex, Paylocity, they're completely turnkey. All you do is get on their website, enter your time, and they do everything. Pay the taxes, print the checks, put them in envelopes, you know, it's all taken care of. Do the direct deposits. And so it's a great service. But for the amount of money that it would cost, which is around $10,000, $11,000 a year, we could just as easily put that into the software that we'd be purchasing, and still get those time-saving features that we wanted.
Okay. Thank you. Item is for information only. Item number six is for information only as well. Update on water billing usage discrepancies. And with that, I'll ask Mr. Holm, our city services director, to take us through this.
Thank you. We just completed our annual Illinois Department of Natural Resources water audit. The water audit is used and required by the state, basically to report how much water is lost within each water system. The state standard is that no more than 8% annual loss for a given system. Above that, you are considered basically excessive loss. And this year, we did report 11%. So we are over the state standard for loss within our system. We've already begun to rectify that, and I've gone through, highlighted some of them here. And I will go through basically briefly all of the things we've done and are working on. One was with regards to construction sites. It used to be that contractors weren't required to install meters until after their final inspection. We had many contractors who would install their landscaping, be out there watering their lawns all summer without any metered water, and they would just pay one-time flat fee, which was very small. We've now changed that, and they do now have to put a meter in very early in the process. That said, we still have some contractors who are illegally connecting onto our water main, and we've had some unfortunate issues with respect to that. So we're continuing to pursue that. This summer, we did do a system-wide leak study. We did find some leaks. Basically, all of them were minor in nature. And they go on to say there that, even though we detected some leaks, it's certain that there are many, many undetectable leaks within the system. Every system has leaks. And the older the system, the more the leaks. And the leaks that I'm talking about are basically undetectable with today's technology. We have 34 miles of mains that are 40 to 60 years old, and 22 miles of mains that are 20 to 40 years old. So we are a system that, you know, we're becoming now middle-aged to a little bit older than that. We need to continue with our water main replacement program, and I know we've talked about that several times. That's really the only way to get rid of the old mains, and to reduce some of that loss. As far as our metered accounts for both residential, commercial, industrial, on the residential side, we have essentially completed all of our updates within the last decade. So we have a pretty good level of confidence in our residential meters, that we don't think that there's really an issue on the residential side. The commercial, industrial, institutional meters, on the other hand, many of them are old, many of them haven't been inspected for a number of years, many of them are in need of upgrade. And that will obviously result in a cost to the city, and we'll bring that cost forward as a budget item. But that should be money well spent, because upgrading those meters will increase our accountability, and presumably our revenues then. Earlier, I was talking about the 11% loss that we reported to the state. Now that's different than what we see on the bills from DuPage County. What DuPage County bills us versus what we bill our customers, there's actually, this year, a 20% difference. And the reason for that is, that extra 20%, or that extra 9%, if you will, are the un-metered uses, like the losses, the hydrants, firefighting, I mean, number of un-metered and unaccounted for, for things that we're always going to have. You will never get, never get to bill for those things, because you're always going to have those things in your system. We're estimating, and we don't know what the exact number is, but we're estimating that, instead of 20%, the number should be, on average, around 8% to 10%. Again, that 8% to 10%, we're always going to have, we're never going to get past that. But the other 10% that we're missing right now, we've got to try and find. And that's where we're continuing, we're going to begin, and we already have begun this frankly, to look at the age of our meters. Again, I said, a lot of the meters in the industrial areas are old, they're in need of replacement. We've begun looking at our large quantity users, those users in our system who are the largest users. Finance director went through and identified a number of unique usages for us. For example, she looked at all the dry cleaners in town, and four out of the five dry cleaners were at this level, but one dry cleaner was way down at this level. Why was he down here? And so we were starting to investigate those types of things. We are looking at our DuPage County readings, and our meters associated with DuPage County. We're looking to do a post-guard program, which will help us with inside-outside read discrepancies. We are looking to increase our reconciliation between finance and city services. Every month, accounts drop off and are added to the system, and we've got to try and make sure we're staying on top of that. So we're approaching this in many different ways, and I would venture to guess that each one of these will produce small results in and on themselves, but the big picture is, we should have a good result, I mean, from all of them put together. So I guess now I'll take questions.
Alderman Wesley?
Gary, was this calculation, was this the water main breaks we have in town, too, or does that not affect us?
See, a water main break would be, already See, a water main break would be already accounted for in the eleven percent, but that's part of that, that, that...
The twenty.
The twenty percent. So that's what I mean, you're always gonna have something in your system that you're gonna pay for every year that you're not gonna get back. A water main break is a good example. We obviously don't meter a water main break.
Right, but I'm just saying, because it's twenty percent, what they're saying we use could be offset the money, I mean, the loss with the water main break. Am I correct? Did we look at the water main breaks we had during this study?
Yes.
And we could calculate how much water is used up in a water main break.
We can estimate them, correct. Everyone's gonna be a little different, but that's gonna be, water main breaks are gonna always be part of that eight to ten percent.
Well, I understand that, but you said there's discrepancy there, is that part of it?
Yep.
I'm gonna call Alderman Suback then, Alderman Coles.
Gary, I think you're being kind calling our infrastructure and water mains middle-aged. I think it's old, say the least. And also on the industrial, the institutional meters, depending what that cost gets to, if it gets too high, we could look to a special service area to pass that cost on back to the industrial users. Thank you.
Alderman Coles.
It also depends upon the twenty percent, depends upon how many fires you have in the city. If you have four or five fires, that uses a lot of water. Don't let nobody kid you. You should know that, Wesley.
Obviously, we won't require the fire department to hook out a meter before they begin fighting the fire, so.
Alderman Tolemy.
Just real quick, Gary, thirty-four miles of our, is forty-six years old?
Yes.
Thirty-four miles?
Yes.
So really, more than half of, almost half of what we have in cities.
Approximately about half of what we have in the city.
And how, how can I put this? How would you say, without going out and getting bonds to, you know, to replace them all? Because I know it's costly, right, to do like two blocks of mains is what, roughly how much?
Well, we just paid a little bit over five hundred thousand dollars this year to do, like on Yeracoula and Montclair, actually about five hundred and fifty, six hundred thousand dollars for Yeracoula and Montclair.
Just for the water mains?
Just for the water mains, yeah.
And that was approximately how many blocks?
Three blocks.
Three blocks.
Okay. So I mean, just in context, I guess what I'm getting with this is that when you talk about thirty-four miles of water mains that are forty-six years old, and one of the things that we've talked about appears at council is that our infrastructure is getting older and we do need to start replacing it, is that when you have three to four blocks is less than a half mile, you know, basically is less than a half mile. Eight blocks, if I remember correctly, was eight blocks roughly to a mile. So if we're thirty-four miles, the five hundred and fifty thousand dollars, you're looking probably at about twenty, twenty-five million dollars to replace just that piece, the thirty-four miles?
I would guess that that's probably not in left field. Correct, yeah.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so to sum up, there are procedures in the works to try and, to help the situation. We tried doing the leak study. It showed minimal results of leakage. We were working with the construction sites to do the meter. Also, looking at the water main replacement program and seeing how we can work through that, as well as looking at the industrial and institutional meters and trying to work that route. This item is for information only. Next item was gonna be to discuss Topgolf permit fees, but to actually have that conversation at its, in its most robust format, we would need the data that states what the fees are, the plans themselves, and currently, the Park District has not submitted the Topgolf plans. Therefore, it's my suggestion that we do have this conversation, the first finance meeting in February. So I'm gonna make that motion to table to the first finance meeting in February. Is there a second?
Second.
And a question? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is items to be considered at future meetings. Item A, sales tax rebates and tax reductions. Item B, two thousand seven oh eight budget preparation. And I was requested to add item C, which would be utility bill delinquencies. Are there any other items for future? Alderman Suback.
Just on the Topgolf that we moved to a future item, we should also request from them estimated sales tax or sales revenues from that facility, because it's not the Park District that's requesting the reduction of fees, it's a private entity, and that would be one of the factors I think would be important to consider. And then, not just what their estimated are, but what are they basing that estimate on? I believe they have one other location in the United States, so if we could see what the sales are at that other location on a yearly basis, that might help us in our determination.
Mr. Managers, is that agreeable?
Yeah, yes, I've made note of that, Madam Chairman.
Thank you. Are there any other items for future meetings? I make a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
And a question? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Okay, I'd like to call the Planning, Zoning and Building Committee to order, let the minutes reflect that the same members are present. Next item is the approval of minutes of December fourteenth, two thousand six. I'll make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Chairies. Next item is report and recommendation Doyle Builders, approval of a two-lot subdivision, vacant property located at two fifty South Central in Wooddale to allow for construction and use of a two, single-family detached dwellings. Proposed lots meet all of the R3 single-family resident district standards, no variations are requested. There was a problem in the past with some tree removal that I believe has been looked at and addressed. Has Mr. Doyle presented his new site plan?
Yeah.
Excuse me, I was talking to...
Mr. Chairman, I believe the petitioner is here and he does have that information, and I believe he has a presentation. Did you want to show committee?
Mr. Doyle. You have to come either speak over at the podium over there.
Yeah. I did submit a plot of survey with the existing trees and the plans for the property on the south of two fifty, South Central. There was, one tree was removed that shouldn't have been. So I was issued with a ticket and I will be replacing the tree, whatever the acquirements are.
Okay. You okay with that?
Oh, yeah. So, okay, the plan's been looked at and accepted, approved, or are you just getting them now?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. City staff is working with Mr. Doyle in order...